Hello and good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Board for Murfreesboro City Schools for October 28th, 2025. Thanks to everybody who's here with us live in person, and welcome to all of you watching us from elsewhere. We're going to begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I want to call four of our students up to lead us. We have Ellie Powers and Emory Powers, first and fourth graders from Kason Lane, and Roxy Robinett, a fourth grader, and Will Houchens, another fourth grader from Northfield. So if everyone else could stand, we'll stand for our Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll stay standing for a moment of silence.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for its saints, one nation under God, and the rule of liberty and justice.
And now our moment of silence. Board members, you've seen the proposed agenda for tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the agenda is approved. Communications report from Ms. Lisa Trail.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Where'd she go?
They're still out of the way. I have just a few communications for you tonight. First of all, our Coordinated School Health, they have been very busy this month. They held two different sports clinics at MTSU. One was volleyball and one was tennis. Both were so well-received, it allows our children to get kind of that first introduction to these sports, as well as to be on the MTSU campus. So we want to say thank you to those, Autumn and Renee, and I'm going to say my communications team as well, for making sure that we have those successful clinics. Congratulations to Salem Elementary on receiving the Best Elementary School Ruthie Award. Very proud of them this year, and they've celebrated that. The City Schools Foundation, Eric Clements, and all of our board members, I want to say thank you to them for their work on the Serve It Up Pickleball Tournament. And a huge thank you to our sponsors. We could not do it without it. It's obviously a fundraiser, and we appreciate those that have come through and support the foundation's goals. The foundation will present over $60,000 in grants this Friday, so we're very excited. We have not revealed the names of the grants yet, or the winners, but we are very excited to present those on Friday morning to all of our schools. We'll also include in that a $5,000 grant that was part of a Nissan Foundation grant to the City Schools Foundation, and that will go for robotics. Through our partnerships with the City of Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation, we hosted a parent university at the Wilderness Station and Barfield Park. It was a great turnout. It was all about watershed and just a really, really great day. Also, our friends at Patterson Park served as the host for the Taste of Latin America celebration on October 23rd. I know I saw several of you there. It was a great time, and Ms. Moore got to do a little dance with one of... She was chosen. So, yeah, thank you for participating in that. Also, thank you to the First Baptist Church for donating to our backpack program. They sent a bunch of supplies to us this past week. Before I forget, Northfield has asked me for you to go to the Lucky Lad Farm website and support Northfield by voting for their favorite storybook pumpkins, and they are in the food group category. But I will send you guys a link to that, so you know how to support them. They showed me the pumpkins. They are adorable, but they would like to have your support and your vote. Then last but not least, Ms. Moore had asked me to touch on the backpack program and the family food supply program in lieu of SNAP benefits maybe going away really quickly. I will say that Jennifer Lowe, our communications, our community outreach person, has done a really, really good job. And because of our support from First Baptist, New Vision, so many other churches, there is an ample supply of food right now for our students, as well as our families in need. We do have a plan. We're working with the social workers. We're working with Ken's Student Support Services team to make sure we keep that supply. If people want to donate to the backpack program, that would go through Jennifer. If they want to give one... We had a church reach out today and just wanted to give us a financial donation, same thing. It'll all be filtered through that, our Family Resource Center, and through Jennifer Lowe. And we will be happy to take food donations or financial donations, but we do have a plan to serve our families, including our staff families.
Thank you, Ms. Trail.
Yeah.
Yes, I appreciate you adding that. I just received a couple of questions from people in the community wanting to know how they could support.
Yeah. So if they want to reach out to me or to Jennifer, either one, we'll get them the right information, and if we do it as a district, I think it'll help each school to be able to find those adequate resources.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, the Best of MCS. Dr. Duke.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
It is my privilege to recognize our October Best of MCS honoree and to publicly thank this employee for their impact here on our district and our schools, and most importantly, their impact on our students. And I am honored tonight to invite Ms. Rita Dotson to join me at the podium. Rita's journey with Murfreesboro City Schools is a testament to the dedication, pride, and incredible impact of all of our support staff who we have here in our system. Rita began her career with MCS as a custodian at Salem Elementary, where she quickly became known for her strong work ethic and positive spirit. In April of 2023, much to the dismay of Principal Phillips, she transitioned to our Transportation Department as a bus assistant, where she serves on Bus 565, which supports students at both Salem and Black Fox. This year, Rita took on an additional role, the responsibility of cleaning our brand-new transportation and maintenance building. And she didn't just clean it, she made it shine. Rita single-handedly prepared the building for its opening, and her pride in her work is evident in every corner of that building. Mr. Barge, our Assistant Superintendent, told me that Rita is an exceptional worker whose dedication, reliability, and pride in her work make her an invaluable part of our team. She keeps the entire facility spotless and well-maintained, ensuring a clean, safe, and comfortable environment for everyone. What Rita has done with the Ridgely facility in the last five months is truly miraculous. Our transportation supervisor, Mr. Rome, could not be here with us tonight, but he wanted to make sure to tell me how important Rita is to the entire transportation team. He said everything Rita does, she goes above and beyond to get the job done. The before and after of the building has been incredible. He also added that Rita did a wonderful job as an assistant on the bus, and the children just love her. She is one of the sweetest and most respectable employees you will ever meet. She is definitely one of a kind in the very best way possible, and she absolutely deserves any recognition that comes her way. Rita's story reminds us of the critical role our support staff play in ensuring our schools and operations run smoothly. Their work may happen behind the scenes, but it is the foundation to our success. Because of employees like Rita, we are able to better fulfill our mission of ensuring our students are both academically and personally successful. Finally, what truly makes Rita stand out is just not the high quality of the work she does, but it's the attitude she brings to everything that she touches. Mr. Barge told me that Rita's initiative and can-do attitude inspire those around her and set a strong example of teamwork and commitment. He went on to say that she treats everyone with kindness and respect, offers support when others need it, and brings a positive spirit to every part of her day. Ms. Dotson, on behalf of Murfreesboro City Schools, on the school board, it is my great honor to say thank you for what you do for our district, thank you for what you do for our students, and congratulations on representing the Best of MCS.
That was very sweet. Nobody's really ever acknowledged, but I don't think I deserved that. But thank y'all for seeing me as a good person and a good worker. And that's it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Duke, we'll stay with you for our spotlight on education for Discovery School's Blue Ribbon Recognition.
All right. Well, this evening, we are proud to recognize the Discovery School for being selected as a 2025 nominee for the National Blue Ribbon Schools Program. Although the U.S. Department of Education recently announced that the program would be discontinued, we did not want to miss this opportunity to celebrate what this nomination represents. Being chosen as the nominee for this national recognition is a significant achievement that reflects the school's ongoing commitment to excellence, innovation, and student success. The Blue Ribbon nomination process is rigorous for identifying schools that are among the highest-performing in the state, both academically and in closing achievement gaps among student groups. What makes this moment even more special is that this year also marks the 20th anniversary of the Discovery School, and earlier this evening, we had a special reception to honor both students and faculty alumni who have helped shape the school's remarkable history. If the program had continued, this would have been the third time Discovery School has been recognized as a national Blue Ribbon School in their 20-year history, an incredible testament to the sustained excellence, innovation, and community support that defines this school. Discovery School's continued success is the result of the hard work of its students, the dedication of its teachers and staff, and the leadership of Principal Bullard, and the strong partnerships with its families. While formal recognition may no longer continue at the federal level, this honor stands as a reminder that excellence is not dependent on an award. It's built in day in and day out through the consistent pursuit of high standards, curiosity, and care for every child. So on behalf of Murfreesboro City Schools and our district leadership team, I want to extend our congratulations and gratitude to the Discovery School community for representing the very best of what public education can be, a place where students are known, safe, challenged, and empowered. And I'm happy to invite Dr. Bullard and her team to the podium to formally thank them and congratulate them on this honor.
Thank you, Dr. Duke, and thank you, Board. As you said, I have members of the leadership team here with me tonight, and I can't overstate how much work went into the Blue Ribbon application. These folks behind me put in tremendous effort last year, as did many of the staff members you met during the reception earlier, and we are just so grateful for them. As Dr. Duke said, being a nominee is a tremendous honor, but what makes it so special really isn't just the recognition itself, but it's what it represents, and it's truly a reflection of our school's culture, and that's something we're incredibly proud of. In fact, just this past weekend, I got an email from a parent who is new to Discovery, and if you will allow it, I'd like to just share a little bit of that with you, because I think it shows what's truly remarkable about Discovery School. The parent said, "Our family relocated from Nashville over the summer, and our son began at Discovery this fall. The growth and positive changes we've seen just over the past few months have been truly remarkable. In his previous school, he often experienced reluctance about attending classes. Since joining Discovery, however, he's become genuinely enthusiastic about learning. Each morning, he looks forward to going to school, seeing his classmates, and participating in the engaging lessons and STEAM projects. We're deeply grateful to his teacher for her guidance, patience, and encouragement, which have made such a meaningful difference in his attitude towards learning. We'd also like to extend our sincere thanks to the entire school team for creating a supportive and inspiring environment where children can thrive academically and personally." I think that message means so much, because it speaks to what we hope for every child that walks through our doors every single day. So like we've said, the Blue Ribbon nomination is not just a reflection of that program. It's not a reflection of one year or any particular test. It's a reflection of the culture that we strive to build, that culture of innovation, of high expectations, of growth for every student. And while that national recognition would be a wonderful affirmation, the true reward comes in those moments on the day-to-day basis that we get with our students, our staff, and our community. So on behalf of our teachers, staff, and students, we'd like to thank you for your continued support and for the recognition this evening, and we are so proud to represent Murfreesboro City Schools.
That's great. Thank you so much. I think, I think, Mr. Campbell.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
How do you become a nominee? Who makes that decision?
We have to be nominated by the State Department of Education based on growth or achievement or a combination of the two. So we had one of the highest achievement scores in the state of Tennessee, and it's a five-year period. So like Dr. Duke said, we were eligible three times in our history, and so based on our history of that five-year rolling period and our high achievement, one of the top achievement scores in the state, we were nominated by the State Department. We completed a year-long application, and then the application process ended.
So who makes the app... I mean, does... How do you... How does the State Department know? Just by records that we submit?
It's by the TCAP records.
So nobody nominates you other than the State Department?
Yes, sir. It's by the state testing.
That's great. That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Mercy.
Any other questions or comments? All right, congratulations. Thank you so much. All right, next on the agenda is public comment. We don't have any tonight, so we can move to our consent agenda. Board, you've seen the items on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Price. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. Action items. First on the agenda is a motion to approve the TESA Accountability Report. Dr. Duke.
Yes, ma'am. State law requires each school district submit an annual TESA Funding Accountability Report to the Tennessee Department of Education. This report outlines goals for student achievement, explanations of how the district's stated goals can be met within the budget, and description of how the district's budget and expenditures from the prior school year enabled the district to make progress toward their achievement goals. Each district's TESA Accountability Report is required to be presented to the public for review and comment before it's submitted to the department. This year, over 60 stakeholders engaged with this report, and the report must be submitted annually by November 1st, and we are recommending approval as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. Do I have a motion to approve the motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, let's vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the TESA Accountability Report is approved. Next on the agenda, approval of contract for maintenance trucks. Dr. Duke.
The City of Murfreesboro, through its Purchasing Department, completed the procurement process for two 2026 F-250 Ford crew cab trucks. Let me get that out. Some trucks, as we're getting, to support our maintenance department fleet. These vehicles are purchased pursuant to the maintenance department's fleet management plan and will be used by maintenance staff for daily operations, including upkeep, equipment transport, and response to work orders across the campuses. The purchase price is $47,469 per vehicle, for a total cost of $94,938. That's inclusive of all freight, delivery, and applicable cost. The vehicles will be purchased by the city on behalf of the city schools and funded through county shared bonds. After approval by the board, we will also take this to approval for the city council, because it is using county shared bonds and it's going through their purchasing department. But we are recommending approval as presented to the board.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the contract for the purchase of the trucks?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dot. Any comments or questions? Mr. Settles.
Yes, ma'am. Is this to replace retiring trucks or expanding our fleet?
It's a replacement, correct, Mr. Barge, for both of those positions? Yeah, just they've aged out.
Aged, that's what I thought. Okay.
Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor of approving the contract for the purchase of two trucks, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The contract is approved. Next, approval of a budget amendment regarding donations. Dr. Duke.
In FY '25, so last fiscal year, Murfreesboro City Schools received two donations, a $10,000 donation from Conference USA to support our honor band, music festivals, and band equipment repairs, and $8,250 from various donors designated for our McKinney-Vento homeless program. Unspent funds from both donations were rolled into our fund balance at the close of FY '25. This budget amendment allocates those funds to continue to supporting our band music initiatives and student services under the McKinney-Vento program for which they really were originally donated, and we are recommending approval as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the budget amendment for these donations?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's vote. All those in favor of approving the budget amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the budget amendment is approved. Next on the agenda, approval of another budget amendment for the City School Foundation.
Yes, as Ms. Trail mentioned earlier, the City Schools Foundation will be distributing over $60,000 in grants to our schools, and some of those monies are coming to our central office for central office staff who wrote grants as well. And so the board is recognizing that tonight, so it can be part of our budget. So the City Schools Foundation will be awarding Murfreesboro City Schools a total of $10,675 in donations for the fiscal year. Again, this is separate from their donations to the schools and specifically to the district. The Instruction Department will receive $6,699, which will support two initiatives. The first is purchase of supplemental materials for our ESL program for enrichment, and the second is additional money for competition fees and supplies for the district's robotics program. In addition to that, the Special Education Department was awarded a grant for $3,976, which will be used to purchase cognition carts, which are mobile carts equipped with research-based cognitively challenging games designed to meet the needs of our gifted and talented students. We are happy to answer any questions you may have, and we are recommending approval as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve this budget amendment for the funds from the City Schools Foundation?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Any comments or questions?
Thank you for the money.
And there's a lot more to come next week. This ain't...
Excellent. All right, let's vote. All those in favor of approval of the budget amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the amendment is approved. Another budget amendment is next, this one for health services. Dr. Duke.
Yes, we are requesting the approval to transfer $17,000 from the Board of Education Budget category to support Health Services category to better align the expenditures with the appropriate budget classification. The funds previously approved in the FY '26 budget will support purchases that reflect the district's commitment to employee health and enrichment, and that should be identified under Health Services. So this is just a transfer of money from one budget line item to another line item, and we are recommending approval as presented.
Thank you.
I move for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any comments or questions? All those in favor of approving the budget amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment is approved. Another budget amendment, this one for Maintenance of Effort. Dr. Duke.
The FY '26 budget was approved by the school board on April 29th, 2025, and by the city council on June 5th, 2025. Following a review by the Tennessee Department of Education, it was determined that the budget did not meet the required Maintenance of Effort standard for local contributions. This standard ensures that local funding for schools does not decrease from year to year. It requires at least the same amount of local revenue per student as the previous year. To meet this requirement, the board will need to add $248,900 of revenue to the budget, and we are recommending this be added in the Local Option Sales Tax category. The board historically budgets this line item very conservatively, and we expect we will meet the new amount in collections. The increase in revenue will be offset by adjustments in expenditures for support for SPED, the Office of the Superintendent, and regular capital outlay. Additionally, the state has requested that the district include $30,000 of TESA on behalf payments in the budget. These are state-funded contributions made directly on behalf of students who are not enrolled during the traditional school year, but still generate recurring costs. Including these payments ensures the budget accurately reflects both revenue and expenditures associated with year-round services that align with state reporting requirements. I know that was a whole lot, so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and we recommend approval as presented.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve this budget amendment?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Comments or questions on all that? Mr. Richardson.
Madam Chair, thank you. Dr. Duke, this was not a failure in oversight on our team's part, but rather a re-categorization from the state, or maybe a different opinion of what those monies represented. Is that right?
Yeah, so our actual local monies, when you think about our tax revenue, are big categories of sales tax, property tax, even though we did make some changes in our property tax this year, that did still meet that standard. This really is relating to the amount of interest and investment revenue we made last year with our entrance. Mr. Owens did a pretty great job of making sure that our funds were invested in a way to capitalize on the interest rates. So we actually brought in more interest revenue than we had anticipated, pretty significantly more. That was recognized in our budget, and that does include... is included in our local contributions as well. So adding this $248,000 to sales tax will make that right with the state from that perspective. And also, as I mentioned in my narrative, we always budget sales tax very conservatively. So adding this to our sales tax revenue, we still feel more than confident that we will meet that new revenue limit, but thank you for asking.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor of approving this budget amendment for Maintenance of Effort, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The budget amendment passes. One more budget amendment, Additional Payroll Assistant Position. Dr. Duke.
Yes, MCS was awarded additional revenue due to the TESA funding formula after the FY ' '26 budget was approved. A portion of this new revenue will be used to offset an additional position with the Finance Department. The new position will be a payroll assistant/staff accountant. The increasing demands on payroll, auditing, reconciling, and general accounting will be under the purview of this position. The amendment will be funded by a portion of the FY... This amendment will fund a portion of the FY '26 salary and benefits. Additional savings will be found in the movement of a current finance position to a full-time funding with school nutrition. In looking at the needs of the department and the work being done, we feel like at this time, and with this increase in money, this would be a wise investment of these funds to help support that department and make sure they're able to fulfill the very detailed duties they have. We are recommending approval as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve this budget amendment?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Any comments or questions? All those in favor of approving the budget amendment for the Additional Payroll Assistant Position, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the budget amendment is approved. Approval of Revenue and Expenditure Report. Mr. Owens.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Sir. Sorry for so many amendments. Due to the timing of the year with the holidays and stuff, we definitely needed to get some of that moving, so thank you. Not much to report right now on our revenue and expenditures. I will point out some of the higher outline percentages right now. So if on our revenue page right now, we are at 39% for this year, and that's because we've already earned quite a bit of interest and investments through CDs and our ICS. So our projections will probably be in line with next year due to our banking contracts, so thank you for that. The other line in the revenue is on line nine, Other State Education. I know that sticks out if you look at it. That is the teacher bonus, so that's the money there. So that would definitely stick out for most of you. And then on the expenditure line, I have technology, and then that is related to the computers. And then I have operation of plants. That is for some billing issues that we have with ABM, but we have those resolved, so do not worry. And then finally, we have regular capital outlay. That was due to cabling rollover during the summer, so it did not get invoiced until after the new fiscal year.
And that cabling was specific to Reed's Rogers, correct?
Reed's Rogers and 910.
And 910.
Yes.
I do want to point out just before we get to questions, that's okay. He mentioned the technology with the computers in that amendment. Those computers have, I know Ms. Long has asked several times, have been... are in the process of being rolled out. I think most of the schools, or half the schools, some... Half the schools have started receiving those. I checked in with April the other day, just see how it was going, and they're about to... It takes about half a day to get the school rolled out. The teachers take their old computers, turn them in, get the new ones, get them changed out, so that's going really well.
Excellent. And outside of that, most of our reflection in percentage points from last year to this year is about 2%, which we gave a cost of living of 2.5, and along with step increases, and most of that's related to salaries. You know, be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, thank you. First, let's get a motion. Do we have a motion to approve the revenue and expenditure report?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Now, any questions or comments for Mr. Owens? I think you're off the hook.
He does such a good job investing that money, that's why we had that problem earlier with budget amendments and stuff. This guy's just, he's probably too good.
Maybe you need to look at my bank.
I know. We need some help. I have a written statement for that. We do not provide that kind of advice.
Wise man.
More ways than one.
Thank you for what you do. It's always an extraordinary job.
It is. Thank you for the support.
Very well done.
Indeed. All right. I think I know how this motion's gonna go. All those in favor of approving the revenue and expenditure report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it passes. Reports and information. Director's update. Dr. Duke.
Yeah, just a few updates tonight. First of all, thank you to Ms. Moore and the board members who were able to join us last night on, with the League of Women Voters, and a huge shout-out to them for putting that forum together. It was a fantastic event, and I appreciate their willingness to host those events for our public, and so just want to say thank you to them. Also, Ms. Van Cleve put on your station an updated board meeting calendar. There are some changes that really reflect January, if you want to look at that. Chair Moore and I have had some discussions, and because of some scheduling conflicts, we had originally scheduled a Saturday retreat in January. We are actually gonna not be able to do that at this time. So we have taken our January 1st meeting and just kind of made it one of those longer evening meetings that we have, we've had on occasion at the central office, and then we will had to add a traditional meeting for voting since we would not be having that retreat. So wanted to flag that for you. Of course, Ms. Van Cleve will keep you all updated closer to, to make sure schedules are done. And then again, Ms. Trell mentioned it, I want to say thank you again to Mr. Rocha, his team, Ms. Trell and her team. They have really worked hard the last 24 hours to help make sure we had a really sustainable plan for short-term help for families who may be impacted, both our families of our students and staff who may be impacted by the changing to the SNAP benefits. And when we kind of realized this was coming upon us, they sprung into action. They pulled the social workers together, pulled the counselors together, pulled our community partners together, and it really was amazing just to kind of sit back and watch how everyone came together to say, "We see a need, we're gonna be there to meet that need." So I just want to say thank you to them and those teams for working so hard for that. But with that, those are all my updates for tonight.
Okay. I have a question for you.
Yes.
So I got a question today from an employee who is, whose job is federally funded. And so I know we talked about this at our last meeting about, does the federal shutdown pose any risk to the federal dollars that we get? And, and you had told us about it last time, but now that we're broadcast, if you would touch on that again?
Yeah, so the federal shutdown will not immediately impact us or our operations at a school, as the school system. So the way the funding works, we actually receive our funding for this year, last year, from the federal government. So the funding that is probably right now being held up, it would actually be funding for next school year. So that works very much in our favor because we have that forward-funded model that we use. So all of our employees, regardless of their funding positions, have nothing to worry about. We still feel very confident that Title I funding and IDEA funding will still be there in some capacity, and that's where the majority of those, our positions are funded from. So although we are very grateful and we need the $12 million in federal funds we get, currently with the shutdown, there is not an impact, and our staff don't need to worry about any of that right now.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Any other business to come before the board?
I'd like to mention one thing. Dr. Duke visited this morning with Cynthia Hopkins, who is head of our ESP. Her dad, T.L. Hopkins, had another stroke yesterday and is hospitalized, and last time I talked to her today, he was not doing real well. Is that the impression you get?
Yes, sir.
So I think thoughts and prayers for Cynthia and her family would be well appreciated.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to say, this is a comment on this bring into action part. I think that, that is one of the things that distinguishes us in such a positive way from what we see in other places. I was just sitting here thinking about how boring our meetings are. No offense. But our meetings are very boring because we have a very cohesive board, and we are not, none of us are here to serve any outside political agenda or have any axe to grind. And I think that speaks volumes to what we're able to accomplish, along with Dr. Duke, who I think is, he's probably, I know he's the best in the state. I know he's the best director of schools in the state, but probably in the nation. But I just appreciate the fact that we can just come here and be very boring and just take care of the business at hand, and there's no grandstanding, there's, except for me. But we come here, we advocate on behalf of our kids and our educators and our support staff. That, that, that tonight spoke so to my spirit about just recognizing, and I don't like to use the word little people because there are none, but recognizing the people that are not normally front and center, but without whom we wouldn't be able to function in our schools, our central office, or anywhere. And I think, I think that really just helps. And I, I know there's a lot of people that goes, go into making that, I'm looking at Lisa Trell, because I think, and I'm not trying to put her on the spot, she's not a put-on-the-spot type person, but I think she does a lot of things that keep these things kind of going, and I really appreciate that work and the effort that goes into it. And it just shows, and when people talk about why people choose Murfreesboro City over another option, I think that's one of the things that, that really comes up, really and truly. And my wife, as you know, subs in some of the schools, and she's always like, you know, they've got these sixth grade classes. I said, "Because they come and they just don't want to leave." You know, the families get used to the good treatment that they get here, and they want to keep them here as long as possible. So I just want to say, this is a pat on the back for our board. I think we just do an excellent job of being boring and just getting the job done, and we're not afraid to take on hard challenges, but we do it with such grace. It's just, I mean, my heart's just full tonight. Sorry, talks a lot.
No, but Mr. Settles, I, I think it speaks to a, a greater overarching theme of when people ask what's different about MCS, it's our values.
Yeah.
It's not just our values up here on this podium, but the values of everybody that works in every school.
Absolutely.
The values that put kids and teachers front and center, not politics, not policy that is outside of the scope of what it is that we're here to do, and that's to serve. And so I thank you for that comment. I think it's very cogent, appropriate, and inspiring.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna jump in and say, because I've been on here a long time, longer than anybody else.
Five years or so, I think.
Yeah, I think so. But it, this is undoubtedly the best board that I've served with down through the years. And for Ms. Dodson tonight, I mean, I, I've been in that building several times, and I am amazed because I know what it looked like to start with, and I know what it looked like today, too.
That is a big building.
Yes, ma'am, it is. And she does a wonderful job. I didn't know who did it. I thought maybe there was a team, but now I know.
Wow.
Ms. Moore, I'd like to give a shout-out.
Please.
I want to give a shout-out to all of our SROs.
Yes.
Because I have a name, okay?